Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Regular Board of Education meeting. As always, we will start with a roll call, please, from Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. And we'll start this evening with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we like to start off each meeting by reading our vision and mission statement. Vision statement is achieving distinction in all that we do. While the vision statement or mission statement reads cultivate an inclusive, high-performance culture of growth and community. This evening, we'll be moving to item number two, Love Public Education Week.
Yes, thank you and good evening. We have just a couple of slides here to share. We're very pleased, the last couple of years, we've taken the opportunity at the end of February, that last week, to celebrate Public Schools Week, or Love Public Education Week. This year is February twenty-sixth through March first, and we have a number of activities. We have a number of activities planned for that week, pre-K all the way up through twelfth grade, so we're hoping that we're able to get staff, students, and the community showing some appreciation for all of the great work and learning that happens in public schools each and every day. Admittedly, trying to come up with some spirit days that would be good for first graders as well as twelfth graders could be a bit of a challenge, but I think the team did a good job. So we've got Monday is One Fort Gear, or School Colors, School Spirit Wear, just something like showing off your One Fort pride. Tuesday, dress like your favorite teacher or principal, which was always scary when I was the middle school principal. Wednesday, dress like your book or your favorite book or movie character. Thursday, Grade Level Color Day or Pattern Day. Of course, all of that will be shared out with all of those kids moving forward. And then Friday, the ever-popular Hat Day. If you ever want to make kids happy, let them wear a hat on a day and you are good to go. We're also really trying to share gratitude more than anything during these few days with our community. We're encouraging students in all of the levels to write to your public school hero a note of appreciation, just even a few words to to share that gratitude for the the daily work that goes into making our schools as good as they are. And also displaying your One Fort Proud color page. So we actually have coloring sheets, middle school and high school as well, which brings back some good memories for me. But the idea there is that kids can take that home, and what we're hoping that they do is that they display that in the window or under the door of their home, and just show their pride for being part of the One Fort community and being proud of their public schools. Additionally, and I'll admit, the prizes are not grand, but we're hoping that families will take a picture of that sign displayed somewhere in their home, and we'll be able to tile those together and show that support in social media and the opportunity to to win a prize as well. And then, of course, in our larger community, we'll be asking kids and staff to work through our community and asking them to share a banner of support in support of public education that week as well. So, good timing, it's sort of that end of February into March grind that everybody feels, but we know that there's an awful lot to celebrate and acknowledge, and we're encouraging everyone to take just a moment to do that. So, with that, I'll turn things back to you.
Thank you. Yeah, always a good time. I remember last year, we did something very similar to it, and I just, I remember getting a couple notes, you know, from teachers that just really appreciated.
Yeah, I think, absolutely, absolutely.
Alrighty, any other comments from fellow board members on that this evening? Alright, fantastic. Moving on to comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. Just a quick reminder that on back of the board meeting agenda, you'll find a full board policy in regards to public comments. Just a couple items I'd like to highlight this evening. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or any other participants. The board does not engage in discussion with the public. All statements shall be directed to presiding officer, no person may address or question board members individually. The portion of the meeting during which on which the comment of public is invited shall be limited to thirty minutes unless extended by vote of the board. I'll get through that. The presiding officer may interrupt, warm, terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So, this evening, I do believe that we have some individuals sign up to speak.
Yes, we do have two submitted comments, which of course, people are able to do that is in the board packet and available for the public, should they be so interested as well. This evening, we have seven speakers. Our first is Amanda Kaiser of Eric Street in Fort Atkinson.
Good evening, everybody, and half-price, Happy Half-Priced Candy Day. My name is Amanda Kaiser, and you probably recognize my name if you're even moderately involved in the Fort Atkinson Community Facebook group. I speak tonight for my seven-year-old son, William, who currently attends first grade here at Luther Elementary. I come here today to ask the people of Fort Atkinson to vote yes on this upcoming referendum. My son last year had art music every other day, and this year, they are now once every four days. They ain't in his classroom, only attends to his class part-time, as they are now split with another room. He is gifted in mathematics and no longer has the option to step out of class during math time for more advanced problems better suited to his comprehension level. Am I mad that he no longer has these options available to him? No. But I am sad, because the referendum failed last year, my son and many other students like him now have less options. What I'm mad about is that every time I comment in the community group about how voting no unintentionally punishes the students, the teachers, the school board, I get a bunch of uneducated commentary where it becomes painfully obvious that people can't seem to look past themselves and concentrate on the betterment of this community as a whole. Because, let's be honest, the children are our future of the community, and right now, we're failing them in a most spectacular fashion. I'm mad that when I talk about how referendum failure means less options for our students and more work for an already overworked district, there are comments such as, well, there are private schools, there's homeschooling, and I shouldn't have to send my child to a religious school to receive a strong education. I also am an intelligent enough individual to know, I'm not smart enough to homeschool. That's not happening. Well, they could cut admin. Well, the website answers that question, and also, the entire admin staff could get cut, and it wouldn't make up for the difference. That's obvious. As a parent in this district, I'm trying to set a good example for my child. For all the commentary you've seen online in the group for me, you've also seen my son in the jujitsu gear promoting the library, his Cub Scout outfit, walking blocks to put out flyers for a food pantry food drive, and then showing up the next weekend to pick that food up. His Amane Day fundraiser, where he donated fifty percent of his earnings, his choice, to the Luther Playground Fund of the Jefferson County Humane Society. We've raised a child who knows how to properly support his community and his district, and it shows in his philanthropic efforts through his extracurricular activities. He has helped uplift this town, and I am asking this town to help uplift him, the students of this district, and the staff that support and love these children. They deserve a strong education, and the only way to get that is through proper funding. As an MPS graduate, I don't think a few people could truly comprehend what it looks like when schools do not receive the proper funding you all are asking for. For some of these students, their school is the stable environment that is not provided at home. We are at risk of upending them yet again in an already unstable world, and I speak as somebody who experienced that thoroughly through my academic career. In conclusion, please visit the website the school board has created, read it thoroughly, and vote yes for our children, our district, and our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Mackenzie Cramlett of Harriet Street here in Fort Atkinson.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Mackenzie Cramlett, and I'm the president of the Fort Atkinson High School Theater Club. Recently, there's been some controversy on the subject of the high school spring play, and I'd like to clear up some misconceptions. I originally was not coming to speak today, but I'm seventeen, hate public speaking, but it's not right for me to sit idly while I'm being threatened and harassed online by adults who didn't have both sides of the situation and jump to conclusions. The club had proposed to produce She Kills Monsters, a play about a girl learning more about her deceased sister through playing Dungeons and Dragons, but it was rejected by administration. Contrary to what some have asserted on social media, the FAHS Theater Club had made the decision during the meeting that was held on January twenty-ninth to simply pick another play as we did not want to create a controversial battle. One of the main characters, Tilly, is implied to be gay, and some adults online have speculated this is the whole reason for the denial of the play. The FAHS Theater Club is a safe space for students to express who they are as people and express themselves as part of the LGBTQ community. We believe this decision by administration was not based on the fact that a character was part of that community, but we believe we are supported by administration. The article in the Daily Union on the subject and subsequent comments were made on social media, but were without all the facts and without the students' decisions in mind. We, as a club, had decided to pick a new play and not make this into the controversy that it's come to. However, some adults have taken it upon themselves to make assumptions and share incorrect information, which has resulted in harassment and threats against students, mostly myself. I believe in the truth, and I believe that everybody should have a chance to hear it. The council members and members of the FAHS Theater Club would like to move on with the production and put this whole situation behind us. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Nick Dingman, also of Harriet Street in Fort Atkinson.
Hello. I'm tall. Alright, I came to address the board today from a fairly close perspective to the discussion about the theater club. As mentioned, my name is Nick Dingman, I'm the parent of the FAHS Theater Club President, Mackenzie Cramlett. I also work professionally as a stagehand and a theatrical designer. My full-time job is managing the Fine Arts Center of another Badger Conference school district. I've been the production, or on the production staff of a high school production of She Kills Monsters, the Young Adventures Edition specifically. It was a wonderful and well-received play, and first and foremost, I want to say that I adamantly disagree with administration's claims that it's not appropriate for high school students. This is, however, not why I'm here tonight. I want to lift up Fort Atkinson High School for their clear and unwavering support of student leadership. I've got a glare on this, sorry. Student selection of productions is not really the standard procedure in most schools, and it's a great lesson in leadership to allow students to select and advocate advocate for what they wish to produce. While their first choice was rejected, student leadership elected to remain a positive source of leadership and simply move on with another selection. Throughout the last week or so, these students have displayed remarkable leadership and maturity in the face of outside adversity. They and the adults who teach them at Fort Atkinson High School should be commended for modeling and teaching great behavior. I was ready to stand and fight along the students on this issue, but when the actual desires of those students was explained to me, I did what any good parent would do and continued to support my student instead of trying to change their opinion to mine. From outside the school, the opinions and wild accusations of a small number of adults has fueled a controversy that's reached into the theatrical social media groups that I follow and resulted in hundreds of comments on the article from people who know very little about the actual situation. The fact that the students involved in this production have had to endure online harassment and threats from local adults is unfortunate. Our students have become caught in the crossfire of a battle that they specifically chose not to start, but were instead forced upon them. I hope that the board recognizes that all of this is the result of a few bad decisions by adults and understands that the most important part of what all of us are here for, the students, have done the right thing all along. Thank you.
Next, we have Carla Mantarak, I'm sorry, of Monroe Street here in Fort Atkinson.
Good evening. My name is Carla Monternock, and I am a Fort Atkinson High School parent. I'm here tonight to express my appreciation for Principal Sherrell, who is a committed supporter of music, theater, and the arts, and more importantly, the students who participate in them. I've had kids in the high school for eight years, and during that time, there have been productions of Elf, The Little Mermaid, High School Musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, and Tarzan. With the exception of Lucky Stiff, which was PG, every one of these shows is rated G, and not one has an iota of queer representation. This year, my daughter played a leading role in Mean Girls. Although it is a PG thirteen production, Principal Sherrell worked closely with the cast and directors to make the show as appropriate for a general audience as possible. They used alternate texts supplied by the show's creators to tone down or eliminate the use of profanity as well as references to sex and drug use. It was a lot of work. Ms. Sherrell spent many hours overseeing and monitoring these changes. Some of the cast, my daughter included, were a little disgruntled to swap out some of the lines for more watered-down versions, but as a parent who often brought young children to see high school performances, I appreciated the spirit in which these changes were made. Ms. Sherrell also worked closely with students to develop a pre-show public service announcement to address some of the more mature content, like body shaming, bullying, and alcohol use. But among the many changes that Principal Sherrell insisted on, none altered or minimized the presence of queer characters in any way. One of the leads in Mean Girls is openly, joyfully gay. Another, after years of being targeted as queer, sings loud and proud, "I'd rather be me than be with you." These characters stood exactly as written. The only change to the queer content of the production was the elimination of the D-slur, which appears multiple times in the original. This made the show safer for queer students, whether they were in the cast, the crew, the pit, or the audience, and they were in all of those places. My kids have valued their time in Fort Atkinson Music and Theater partly because queer students are welcome and wanted there. Principal Sherrell has helped to create and support that environment. I know there are some who are disappointed by the selection of the spring play, but speculation about Ms. Sherrell's supposed bigotry just does not ring true when she signed off on and oversaw the only high school musical in memory with queer content. I thank her for that and for her clear support of Fort Atkinson students in the arts.
Next, we have Sarah Helmick Godvik of Somerset.
Good evening. Thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Helmick Godvik. I want to begin by talking about the Trevor Project, which is an organization dedicated in part to supporting the emotional well-being of LGBT youth. They have released the results of their mental health survey, and their findings are grim. Forty-five percent of LGBT youth seriously considered suicide last year. Forty-five percent. And fourteen percent of fourteen percent of them actually attempted it. We can all agree that something needs to be done. Fortunately, the survey also reported that kids who live in an accepting community are at a significantly lower risk of harming themselves. Significantly. So we owe it to these kids to step up. For whatever it may be worth, I do understand the difficult position that the administration is in. When funding is tied to enrollment, it creates an unfortunate need to hyper-focus on recruitment. More kids equals more money, so they try to get as many kids as possible. However, this creates a perverse incentive to cover up the bigotry that absolutely does exist, and it seems to me like the LGBT kids are being expected to suffer in silence to avoid embarrassing the town and harming recruiting efforts by alienating families who wouldn't want their kids in such a hostile environment. Rightfully so. One of my daughter's most trusted teachers in school said that they worried that if kids were involved with She Kills Monsters, they would be bullied. And based on my own personal experience, since this story has come out, being called a groomer and a pedo, being told I deserve all manner of violence, including sexual assault, this teacher is absolutely right to worry. However, while protecting the children certainly sounds like a noble aspiration, it's actually an acknowledgement of the hateful undercurrent that does exist at Fort. And because we cannot begin to address the problem without first admitting that we have a problem in the first place, the adults in charge are actually doing a huge disservice to the kids by trying to sweep this under the rug and pretend like it doesn't exist. This is why I have turned to the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights to get to the bottom of this. I will pledge right now to support the findings of this investigation, whatever they may be, and I hope that in trusting this sensitive and delicate matter to the professionals, we can all begin to find closure for at least this aspect of our conflict, because we have a plea to do.
Next, we have Brett Ketterman of Stratford Court.
Good evening. My name is Brett Ketterman, and I am the vice president of the High School Voices Booster Club. Voices stands for Volunteer Organization Inspiring Choral Education of Students. Our board consists of eleven parents, many of which are to my left. Together, we organize several fundraisers throughout the year in order to offset the costs required to run a show choir competition season, arrangement, musical license, choreography and costumes, just to name a few. No student will ever be denied the opportunity to be a member of the show choir program due to financial restraints. Show choir is an activity that provides a safe, inclusive space for every student, regardless of gender or orientation, to feel loved and celebrated when they perform. This is not unique to our show choir teams, as every show choir event celebrates this inclusivity. Over this past weekend, the high school held its twenty-eighth annual Showcase Show Choir Competition. It is the third-largest show choir event in the state of Wisconsin out of sixteen, held from January to early March. The event hosted twenty-two competing schools traveling from Indiana, Illinois, Iowa, and here in Wisconsin. Showcase is a community event that would not be possible without the support of Fort Atkinson businesses and the nearly two hundred volunteers made up of parents, grandparents, alumni, school district staff, and students. We would like to take this opportunity to thank a few people, including Dr. Rob Abbott, for taking time to speak during our preliminary award ceremony. Amanda Maling for her incredible assistance with the buildings and grounds. The amazing nutrition department and menu planning led by Christina Oswald. The janitorial staff led by Owen Johnson and Lisa Coats, and the entire high school custodial staff, as they worked tirelessly tirelessly to clean up after nearly thirty-two hundred people that weekend. Also, our high school vocal director, Kaya Snow, and Justin Stager, who leads our incredible combo band, put in numerous hours to make our show choir teams as great as they can be. At this time, I'd also like to give a huge thank you to LeAnn Sherrell. This past weekend, she wore both the hat of the high school principal and a show choir parent. LeAnn was among the volunteers this weekend, sleeves rolled up, running shoes on, and if you've walked the halls of Fort, you know they're not short hallways. Not just this weekend, but every day, she has gone above and beyond as both a principal and a parent to showcase these students in what they love to do, be it performing as a singer-dancer, a band member, or backstage crew person. She is there celebrating their individuality, no matter the gender or orientation. She is there celebrating the inclusivity of the show choir world and what it means to these individuals. In conclusion, I want to thank the school district of Fort Atkinson for helping it be easier for Voices to put on this big event showcasing our students' many talents. Thank you.
And Melissa, I believe, Furman, apologies, of Circle Drive in Lake Mills.
Hello, my name is Melissa Furman, and we have chosen to open enroll our daughters in Fort Atkinson High School because of the opportunities it provides for its students. Our oldest daughter is a senior and is a singer-dancer in South High Street Singer Show Choir. She was Janus in The Fall Musical and has joined forensics this year. Our youngest daughter is a freshman and has played volleyball this past fall and will be trying out for softball in a few weeks. Being the parent of a show choir student, I would like to thank all of those involved who made the Fort Atkinson Show Choir Showcase happen last Saturday. This event is an amazing event and the reason our family learned all about Fort Atkinson High School back in two thousand and twenty, when our daughter was an eighth grader. Back then, little did I know all that was involved to pull off an event like this for your students. So thank you to the school district for supporting the performing arts, the custodial and maintenance staff for all you do getting ready for this event, during the event, and after the event, to food services for the wonderful concessions that are offered during the event, to the parent group Voices, all the volunteers that helped with this event, Dr. Abbott, Mrs. Sherrell, Ms. Snow, and Mr. Stager. This event is no small undertaking and involves many people. People often ask me, why do we open enroll to Fort Atkinson High School? And I think the thing I love most about Fort Atkinson High School is that if there is something you are interested in doing, there is an opportunity to do it, and the students are all supported in their interest, whatever that may be. Having children involved in different activities at the high school, one thing I notice is that Principal Sherrell is there for all of her students. I have seen Mrs. Sherrell at numerous performing arts events, and now that I have a freshman who's interested in sports, I've noticed she's at numerous sporting events as well. Just this past weekend, Mrs. Sherrell was volunteering at Showcase. Anything that needed to be done, she did, sweeping the floors to cleaning up the gym. Fort Atkinson is very lucky to have a principal like her. She is involved, and it is easy to see that she cares about each and every one of her students, no matter what their interest is. It is also evident that her students respect and enjoy having her as a principal. Thank you again for the wonderful opportunities that Fort Atkinson High School offers. These opportunities offered have made a huge impact on my children, and we are looking forward to the rest of the school year.
Alrighty. Thank you for that, and that concludes the comments from the audience. We'll be moving on to the consent agenda this evening.
Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for the approval of a board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will then become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda after request of any board member. This evening, you have before you item A, minutes of the January fifteen, two thousand twenty-four Regular Meeting. Item B, personnel, which includes the resignation request effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, that of Amy White, one point O FTE science teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Item C, gifts to the school district. This evening, we are very happy to receive a donation from the Napton Music Notes Incorporated of seven guitars with an approximate value of one thousand dollars for the high school introduction to guitar class. Also, a donation from the Horde Historical Museum, that of a metal bench with an approximate value of seven hundred dollars for the Rockwell Elementary School Playground. Then, a donation from Space Saber in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for grade five activities here at Luther Elementary School. And finally, a donation from the Fort Atkinson Kiwanis Club of three microwaves with a value of approximately two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents or so for student use during lunch. Certainly, the board and we would all like to thank Napton Music Notes, Horde Historical Museum, Space Saber, and the Kiwanis Club of Fort Atkinson. Then you have item D, budget transfer requests, and item E, payment of district bills and treasurer's report.
Thank you. We have the consent agenda in front of us. Would anybody, any board member like to pull anything out to discuss?
I would move to pass the consent agenda as presented with no removals.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and Ms. Haas, please.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alright, thank you for that. We'll be moving on to instruction part of this evening, summer school course offerings.
Yes, first of all, Mrs. Sully, if you could help with Mrs. Reynolds. Usually, she gets pretty animated with the summer school presentations, so we definitely would like to keep her in check. This evening, unfortunately, our Director of Instruction, Amy Oakley, was unable to be with us this evening, but she is here in video form. That of providing our community and the board a and the board a brief overview of truly hundreds of offerings that are coming our way beginning in June, followed by your opportunity to take action approving those courses so that we can go ahead and start final planning for summer school this year. We'll turn things over to the electronic Amy.
It's my pleasure this evening to bring to the Board of Education the course offerings for the 2024 Summer School Session. Our summer school theme this year is "Come on, Get Happy," and we are very excited about the summer school session ahead. The first big news that I have to share with the community is we're heading to the high school this summer. Due to the construction for the safe entrances and building maintenance upgrades at our four elementary schools, we're heading to the high school for summer school. All summer school will be located under one roof for the first time ever. With the only exception will be those camps that typically take place out in the community, but as a whole, we're very excited about having all of our programming in one location. Stay tuned for more information about what this will look like for families and all of the details, but overall, it's a very exciting summer for us as we all head to the high school. This summer, we will have 112 total course offerings for our 2024 session. Last year, we had approximately 1,400 students who came and participated in our summer school program, so when we think about 112 course offerings plus 1,400 amazing One Fort kids, we are confident that this is the recipe for the best summer ever, and I'm excited to share with you a little bit about what those offerings will look like this summer. The Fort Atkinson Summer School Program strives to have something for everyone, and we work diligently to make sure that our offerings align to what our students and our community want to spend their summer school doing. We offer enrichment courses, which are classes that are just for fun for students going into grades kindergarten with mini kindergarten all the way through grade eight. We have 28 of those offerings. We also offer maintenance classes for those students who are looking to avoid summer slide and keep their reading and math skills active over the summer. In grades one through six, we offer 12 of those classes. We offer intervention classes for students who might need some more intense support to make some accelerated progress this summer in reading and math. For students going into grade one through their, into their freshman year, we offer 16 of those classes. At the high school, we are excited to offer three four-credit classes this summer, as well as these 16 credit recovery classes we offer our learners who need those opportunities in the summer. We have two special education classes for students who need those services, and last but not least, we are excited to have 35 camp offerings for students who are in upper elementary, middle school, as well as high school. Every year, I like to share with the board a little bit about what's new. I always reassure families that we will continue to offer our favorites that are every year in summer school, and it's always nice to welcome some new things as well. So, this summer, we're excited to offer a new science class called Summer Science Squad to our first and second graders. We have three new camps for elementary, Club Brain Challenge, which is a puzzle camp, hands-on and brain puzzles, as well as even escape rooms, which will be fun. We have a summer choral camp for our middle school and high school singers, as well as a new camp called Kids in the Kitchen Camp for elementary students who want to beef up and start to learn their culinary skills over the summer. As I mentioned earlier, we are bringing back our ELA, our English Language Arts Intervention Class, for students going into high school, as well as reinstating our math intervention classes at the middle school. And as I mentioned previously, we are introducing three high school four-credit classes, Career Pathways, Physical Education, and Health for students who might need some additional flexibility in their schedule during the school year to take those classes in the summer. This is always a nice opportunity for me to share that we're hiring. We are always looking for great certified teachers to join our summer school team. Summer school is what it is because of the fabulous teachers that we have on our team and the experiences they create for our kids. So, if you know someone who'd be great, we'd really appreciate you to encourage them to apply. Last but not least, it's important to put on your calendar that our priority registration is coming up a month earlier this year. With the end of the school year being a little earlier due to the construction, we are moving priority registration to the beginning of March, so priority registration will open on March 5th and run through Tuesday, March 12. So, priority registration is so important because that is our opportunity to collect the requests from Fort Atkinson students, and so we can make sure that our course offerings align and give the number of sections and the offerings that they want, so that everyone who comes to summer school is happy with their summer school schedule. So, overall, it's looking to be a very exciting summer, and we hope that your student will join us this summer. Thank you so much.
Oh, let's clap for Amy, yes.
I'm sure she's still watching somehow, right?
I felt like she was there. It was a conversational tone. I kept looking to the podium. As the board is aware, and just the community is aware, in incredibly small font, there are six pages of course offerings in the board packet, which of course will be very well communicated to families so they can make their selections, but as Amy pointed out, there's an incredible depth and breadth of offerings for kids of all ages throughout the course of the summer. So, we are asking your approval this evening of those courses so that we can get the ball rolling.
I'll take over the Amy role, and I'll acknowledge that the summer school programming that we've been doing is amazing for so many years. I know, you'll still get up and cheer. Okay. I mean, my daughter is a sophomore in college, and I still have some of the sewing projects around the house of hers and the paint on glass.
Paint on glass.
You get a lot of projects home from some of these enrichment summer school classes, but I mean, it just, I think it's great and amazing, and I love the programming that we offer in the summer for students.
If I could just highlight as well, sorry, Mrs. Reynolds, I, you know, we were, when I was looking at this with Mrs. Oakley, we were commenting on how many more offerings there are for middle school and high school students as well. And a few years ago, that was always like, what can we do a little bit more at secondary? And in the last two years especially, you know, teacher interest as well as student interest, and then this variety that we're offering through camps and other sort of shorter-term or shorter-duration opportunities have really blossomed. So, we're really excited about those options for some of our older students, too. Apologies for interrupting you.
Yes, it's my turn, it's my turn. Well, everybody knows I love, love, love our summer school. I think our, I mean, it's just, it's amazing, and I know that I've heard from a lot of other districts and a lot of other parents that their kids want to come here for our summer school, so that's obviously an amazing thing. And the fact that we have 112 course offerings, that's insane for summer! And these are not just, you know, your regular, you know, math and reading. These are fun. These are ones that I want to go to. Of course, I want to go to everything, but... But 35 camps, too. That's crazy. This is keeping our kids well-rounded in so many different things. They get to, you know, just add more to the depth of themselves, which I think is just absolutely amazing. And of course, Amy and her team do so well to make sure that every student gets what they want, and they work with every single family. I know I've emailed late at night, "Oh, my gosh, I can't do this, can we do something else?" And I get an email back. So, they just, I can't say enough. Everybody knows I absolutely love our summer school program, and I'm always going to be a big supporter of it, and I just, oh, I love it. They do so good.
And for me, what's nice about it is it's ever-changing, it's something that we're always continuing to improve, so I certainly appreciate Amy and her team continuing to make that as good as they possibly can, so it's certainly something I'm proud about.
You'll be receiving the Nutrition Services Report here shortly. One of the nice byproducts of having everyone under one roof this summer will be related to breakfast and lunch for so many of our students as well. So, there's just so many things that are connected to this, that it really is a great community resource.
All right, we will need a, we have a motion in front of us here.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Okay, all right.
I'll second it.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve that...
Yes, we'll invite Mr. Knit, our Director of Business Services, to the podium to introduce our auditors. So, as the board and community are aware, we are, we are required to have a very, very rigorous public audit each and every year, and so Mr. Knit and his guests will be sharing just a brief overview of their findings in that process. Mr. Knit?
You have to follow summer school, right?
Yeah, Amy, is there a similar excitement about the audits, or...
Well, it depends, depends on the delivery.
Thank you. So, I'm happy to introduce Christina Dahmer, Dahmer, my apologies if I'm butchering your last name, from Lauderbach and Amen. They are the district auditors down in Naperville, Illinois, so I will turn it over to Christina now.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you can see our lovely deliverables from the audit process. Just to kind of give you an overview of what the audit process entails, by state law, you are required to get an audit each year. That audit process requires for a CPA to give an opinion on your financial statements to say that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for state and local governments in the United States of America. My name is Christina Dahmer. I work with Lauderbach and Amen. I actually live in Wisconsin in the Green Bay area, and thank you for allowing me to come into your meeting virtually today to discuss the audit process and go over your audit report. I promise it'll be a breeze, and we're not going to dwell on any details or numbers. And in fact, your audit has a really great area in it. If you wanted to kind of break down the results or point some district citizens in the right place to take a look at a summary of the results, I would direct them to the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which, as you can see in the table of contents, begins on page five. But overall, as your auditors, our only claim to fame here with this process is the independent auditor's report. And in order to develop this and give you what your result was, which is a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, we come in and we perform audit procedures following standards for government audit standards and generally accepted audit standards in the United States of America. Based on those standards, we will select and test the accounts in your financial statements to ensure that they are reported in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, I'm happy to report you had, like I said, a clean opinion, and although that might not be as exciting as some of your summer school classes, I admit I want to really go to that culinary class. I think that would have helped me out a lot in college when I didn't have those skills. But this is a really great result for the district, and what this means is that you can rely on the numbers in these financial statements to help you make decisions, to continue on with your budget process, et cetera. The Management's Discussion and Analysis, which follows that audit opinion, like I said, is a really awesome overview. This is prepared in narrative form by management with some explanation of things that change from the previous year to the current year to give you a nice summary of your financial statement results for your fiscal period ended June 30, 2023. So, I really do recommend that part of this document for reading by basically everyone. The rest of the document, if you're like me or maybe have insomnia, you might want to dive into, but of course, it is out there, and you can see it's all of your detailed financial information, and the way that the government standards work is all of the stuff that's up front here for governmental activities. That's going to be everything that you owe and everything that you owe. So, your capital assets, buildings, et cetera, as well as all of your liabilities related to pensions, other post-employment benefits for your employees, as well as any general obligation debt outstanding. So, that's what this net position amount is here. What you budget each year then is detailed after that in the fund level information in your financial statements. So, I do like to point that out because you kind of start with data that's on full accrual when you're used to seeing budgeted amounts by fund on a regular basis. And so, that detailed information is in your financial report following your governmental activity summary. So, you can see what, you know, happened fund by fund. But generally, the district is following all of its policies in conducting its financial business throughout the year, and we had very minimal recommendations predominantly related to some items that ended up over budget that, you know, maybe were not planned during the original budget process. That was really the only item that we noted in our communication to management, so I really congratulate you on doing a great job and following all of the board policies as well as the financial standards in the United States of America. So, the rest of this is, like I said, if you're really having trouble with insomnia, you can dive into the details here. The notes to the financial statements help explain how all of those numbers in the financial statements are developed, and whether or not there's any items there that we have estimated and how all of that works. So, all of the detail that you see kind of summarized up front, you can dive into more detail here in the back, and that basically concludes your financial statements on a high level. I'm always available for detailed questions if anybody has them at any point in time, if they dive into all of these details. However, I'm just grateful to be here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you had for me at this moment in time as well.
Thank you for that presentation, much appreciated. Do we have any questions at all regarding the audit here? Obviously, we received this, this is a process that we can go through this, and if we have any questions, I'm undoubtedly sure that you are available for those questions if we do have them, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, and all of the documents that were referenced in the presentation are available online in the board documents, as they are, as are pretty much everything that we report on from the board table. I also just want to extend appreciation to your firm. This is the second year that we've been working with your team, and it's really, I think, been a good experience for us, you know, in the interaction and in the work that you're doing as well, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, we appreciate working with you and the district as well.
All right.
You're off the hook unless you're going to come do like a CPA class for students in third graders.
While cooking.
I'm open to both of those, but maybe not at the same time.
I'll attend that one.
Thank you very much. Sounds like a plan. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Good evening.
All right, we have a motion in front of us to accept the audit report.
I'll do it. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the audit report for the 2022-23 fiscal year as presented by Lauderbach and Amen, LLP, Naperville, Illinois. I so move.
I'll second, excuse me, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, thank you for that. Next up, we have our Nutrition Services Report.
Yes, we're happy to welcome our Nutrition Services Director, Christina Oswald, to the podium to provide her annual Nutrition Services Report.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate being here. Had I known that I could video in or Zoom. All right, so today's agenda, I'd like to talk a little bit about breakfast, lunch, maybe some of the challenges we've had in food service lately, and opportunities, and then kind of what we can expect for the rest of 2324 and moving into the 2024. the rest of 2324 and moving into the 2425 school year. All right. So breakfast served in school district, we're lagging behind. If you can see, we had, the large black is the national average, and then all of those colors after that are kind of where we're sitting currently. As you can see, 2122 was our best year. You may remember, COVID happened. Free meals happened. So that's kind of probably the deciding factor there. 2223, we lagged a little bit, and now we're definitely lagging behind. So I think that we really need to look at some of the opportunities that we have to increase our breakfast participation. Currently, we're doing what we call the traditional model. Students come to school early. They come through the lunch line, or I'm sorry, through the serving line. I guess it's not a lunch line at breakfast. Sit in the cafeteria and eat. Of course, there's some challenges that come with that. Busing, parents getting kids here on time. Sometimes there's a stigma related to eating breakfast early in the cafeteria because maybe that's what not every family does. There's kind of a stigma when it comes to those that are maybe lower income having that meal. So there's a lot of things that I think that we, as the Fort Atkinson Board, maybe need to look at as to what can we do to really help our students. Some of the models that I've been kind of tossing around, I've talked to the high school principal about maybe doing a second chance breakfast as we look at changing the schedule for next year. And a couple years ago, Luther Elementary allowed me to test a breakfast in the classroom concept, which I think was really popular. So as we look at why breakfast is important, I mean, standardized test scores increase when kids are not hungry. Behavior in classrooms kind of settles down in the morning when kids are not hungry. You know, decrease in absenteeism, behavioral issues, tardiness, all of that. So I think, you know, I don't necessarily have the power to say this is what you're doing, but I am just gonna kind of put this kind of bug in your ear that as we're looking at how can we help the kids of Fort Atkinson, maybe it's time to start tossing around some different breakfast models and see like kind of what sticks. All right, lunch, we're doing pretty well. So national average again is that black line, and there we are at the side. So if you look at, again, 2122 free meals, we're not that far behind where we were when we were serving the free meals. We're at about 51% participation right now, which is pretty decent. But I think there's always room for growth. But, you know, like I said, I'm happy with where it is, but I certainly think that there's always something that we could do better. Let's talk about some challenges we've had recently. Budget. Okay, again, if you look, food cost has been quite an issue. It looks like just about everything across the board is up from last year, aside from gloves, which supply and demand during COVID was a little bit crazy. So you look at that price. So if you take that out of the equation, you know, everything has been creeping up steadily over the course of the last couple years. The only thing that hasn't been creeping up steadily is kind of like what we're charging for our meal prices. Reimbursement rates, okay? While everything else, you know, prices have been creeping up steadily, if you look from 2223 down to 2324, we're actually receiving less money from the government. Okay? So if you read articles, it talks about reimbursement rates went up, the base rate went up. What happened was the additional funding that was part of the Keeping Kids Fed Act of 2022 has gone away. So on paper, sounds great. In reality, we're getting less from the government to pay for these meals. So let's look at some meal costing. Okay, so 2223, we chose not to come out of COVID and raise prices. Unfortunately, that meant a loss. So if you dig deep into that audit you guys were just looking at, you're gonna see that the Food Service Fund did lose money last year. But it's because we anticipated that. We chose to kind of eat those costs in order to help our families. Families that we know were coming out of a pandemic struggling financially, and we didn't want to burden them any more than that. We knew that we'd have to take a price increase. We were very conservative with the increase in our costs when we went into the 2324 school year, raising everything by 10 cents, which really doesn't even cover the amount that milk went up. Milk went up 10 cents, fruit went up 8 cents. I mean, if you really add up all of our additional costs, when we chose that conservative kind of line, we knew we weren't gonna cover it, but at least it was a little bit. So we are looking at, you know, Business Services and I will be talking about what proposals we're gonna have to make within the next couple months to the board about, are we gonna have to look at another price increase for 2324? I'm sorry, for 2425. We certainly don't have to discuss that tonight, but I just want to, again, kind of throw that out there, that that is a distinct possibility. Anybody that's gone to the grocery store knows, food costs have gone up. It's no different for the food that we purchase. Okay, unpaid meal charges. We had a new policy. We talked about this a year ago. New policy went into effect. We did not want to lunch shame. We did not want to take away lunches in line from students because unfortunately, unpaid meal debt is not a student problem. It's a parent problem. It's a financial problem. It's a community problem. And we don't want the littlest kids in our, you know, in our community to feel the burden of that. So we chose to make sure that every mouth got fed regardless of the bottom line. It's in line with the standards in most districts. I just have it here. I'm not gonna read it verbatim. You guys know this policy. You guys know where to find it. But basically, it says, we're gonna feed every student, and we're gonna continue to contact parents multiple ways, multiple times in order to collect any unpaid meal debt. The policy has been shared in handbooks. Meal debt is an unallowable expense for Fund 50. So what that means is when there's debt, it's not the federally funded food service program that has to absorb that debt. Once we decide it's bad debt, the school district has to figure out another way to pay that. Unfortunately, that usually means it comes out of the general fund. So that's why it's really important that we do our best to try to collect on any of that unpaid meal debt or find other sources, whether that's donations from community members, but some other way to fund any of that debt. All right, that's, okay, that's enough of the bad news. All right, program highlights. All right. So another way we can maybe fund some debt is to find alternative revenue streams. And this is something that we've been very successful at. So we're looking at some catering. We do a lot of catering in the district. I want to talk about catering. It's district functions mostly. We do things like departments, meetings, staff meetings, professional development, which sometimes involves staff from other districts and not just our district. So we do like to do those things. Any of you guys that attended Showcase this past weekend, you know, we help with that, and that's a little bit of a revenue stream for us as well as we sell some of those things to voices. We do classroom pizza parties. We want to retain participation as much as possible. We don't want teachers to call Domino's and Pizza Hut and Jimmy John's and all of those. So we try to do classroom parties in order to continue to get the participation in our program and to keep that revenue, you know, within the district. And talking about within the district, we love using local foods. Okay, last year, we received an $8800 grant, which allowed us to buy things like fresh local beef, corn, apples, fresh strawberries, fresh squash, melons. So anytime that we can get those local foods, we love to serve those things to the students. Oh, sorry. Last thing, administrative review. So once every, usually three, but because of COVID, it's been five years, we have to undergo an administrative review. That is coming up next month. They will look at everything that has to do with the federally funded programs within our district, all the way from the wellness policy to our free and reduced practices to make sure that we're not overtly identifying any of those students and that we're being fair in any of our judgments as to if you qualify or don't qualify. They're gonna look at our school breakfast program and probably make some recommendations. Same with national school lunch program. They're gonna watch lunch service. Again, make sure that we're serving exactly what we're supposed to be serving, that we're not exceeding our fats and calories and all of those things that, you know, if you ask students, they're like, the portions aren't large enough. We know. But we have to work within this box that they paint for us, and they're gonna make sure that we're doing that. They're gonna check out the after-school snack program that we do in conjunction with base. They're gonna look at the Wisconsin School Day Milk Program, which is the snack milk that all of the elementary students enjoy. And they're gonna look at any of our vending machines and fundraising efforts that really have nothing to do with my program at all. But because we get federal funding, they need to make sure that the atmosphere in the school as a whole is kind of portraying, you know, one that puts an emphasis on nutrition. So now, what's next? So during COVID, we were able to bank a little bit of funds. So I know that we've talked about, you know, some of those challenges that we've had. But the truth is that when there's a Fund 50 balance, that really isn't supposed to go to just help offset all of those costs. It's really to make sure that we're keeping up with the upkeep of all of our kitchens. Like, that equipment just doesn't get handed to us. We need to repair it and replace it. And the reality is, most of our kitchens have not been touched in a really long time. So we've been taking a long, hard look at how we're going to spend that money and be fiscally responsible and set up our kitchens for long-term success. So one of the things that we're looking at is a purdy part of the construction is happening right outside of that kitchen. So this seems like the appropriate time to look at how can we kind of revamp that kitchen, kind of bring it into the 21st century, because it's not even close, you know, and make it a place that's inviting, you know, and that we can churn out some quality food by having some little bit nicer, better equipment that is going to allow us to make fresher kind of batch cooking, make sure that those kids have the best, you know, things that we can put out there. So that's one of the things we're currently looking at is remodeling that purdy kitchen. We're in the planning stages. So as soon as that gets, you know, a little bit further along, we'll let you know what that's going to look like. We're also looking at some equipment that we know needs replacing. So at our middle school, serving lines are, again, relatively old, have not been replaced in a really long time. So we're looking at revamping some of our high school lines, moving them over to the middle school, and just kind of, again, making that space look a little bit more inviting. One of the reasons that we're moving the high school equipment is I was told that the high school's getting a new schedule, which means that my three lunches are going down to two. Okay? So now we have to figure out how we're gonna do that successfully, because now we're talking about getting more kids through in about the same amount of time. So in order to do that, we're looking at bringing in some new equipment there to make it a little bit shorter lines, more offerings, all kinds of fun stuff like that. But again, we want to be, you know, responsible and say, okay, this equipment is still good, so where else can we use it around the district? So that's why we're just kind of doing some shuffling. So when we talk about the new schedule, it means we have to purchase additional equipment. We're gonna create some new positions in order to staff those new lines, or at least we're gonna be starting the conversation with HR to talk about doing that, because it's really the only way to make it successful. Okay? We're gonna create more of a food court feel, I think, is what we're really gonna be going for. We're talking about preparing more smart snack compliant à la carte scratch food, because that's kind of my big passion, is like bringing in really high-quality food for our kiddos. And then, like I said, finding ways to maybe speed them through the lines since we're talking about getting more kids through. So we're probably going to talk about, like, requiring ID codes, barcodes, because right now, we have a lot of kids that are just punching in a number. You'd be surprised that those extra seconds really add up when you're talking about hundreds of kids through the line. So those are just some plans that we have as we're moving forward that will start solidifying through the spring. So we have a really successful opening in the fall. So some key takeaways, we're gonna find ways to increase participation in breakfast. We're gonna explore some price increases for 2425. We're gonna enforce that unpaid meal policy. And we're gonna upgrade our kitchen serving areas to better serve the students of Fort Atkinson. Thanks.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was really good.
Thanks.
Do we have any questions at all or comments from the school board?
I have to say that second to summer school, you guys are doing amazing. Absolutely amazing, because I was at the high school two days, a couple weeks ago, and went through that, your lunch line. Oh, my gosh, I am so jealous. You guys, they, you have so many more choices, better choices than I did growing up. I'm like totally jealous. I want to come there for lunch every day.
You may.
But I don't think our kids understand the high quality that you guys are having during this lunchtime, and even at breakfast. I mean, to me, it's just incredible, because I'm used to the, you know, big square piece of pizza, and we're excited to have those. And here, there's salads, and there's fruit, and there's different types of, you get choices of what you want for your entree, and they taste good. So I just want to, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and the amount of kids that you guys have fed, you know, during COVID, after COVID, this entire time, it's incredible. With the staff that you guys have, you are all doing a phenomenal job, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, you're probably an underappreciated department that has to be there, day in and day out, serving. So appreciate the report.
And I look forward to hearing different breakfast models, because I think that that is a real thing, when kids run out the door and they, you know, grabbed a granola bar or something. But I would look forward to hearing different models that can be perhaps put in place.
All right, a little bit of a plug. You know, one of the benefits, I think, to students and families through COVID, and I say that cautiously, was free breakfast and lunch, and the ability to serve all kids who wanted a meal. And I think I can say safely, and to take the pressure off of the Nutrition Services Department and Business Services Department, to worry less about collections, to worry less about accounting, and worry less about the mechanics of the program on that end of it, and more about, I mean, you have a Director of Nutrition and Services as highly skilled as she is, you know, working that business end, as along with Mr. Knitt and his team. Point being, in the last biennial budget, you know, that was discussed in Madison. I know Minnesota reinstituted that last year, I believe. And certainly, those types of things can be somewhat controversial. But on the receiving end, the number of kids that you and your team fed on a very consistent basis and streamlined operations on the mechanics of it, I think, allowed for some really great opportunities there. So perhaps it will never happen again in Wisconsin. I just hope that it is certainly worthy of discussion, and I hope that it does get some attention in Madison when it comes up again.
I think something that, yeah, I think last year, maybe the year before, you shared was the, like, the amount of scratch cooking that's going on, and that, you know, just the different varieties of the cooking that's happening that maybe didn't happen, you know, a number of years ago. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So what, like, for instance, when we got the local foods, we really tried to figure out, like, what made the most sense to spend that money on. And so one of the partnerships that we've had is with Bosman Beef. So we have been getting in roasts, let's see, arm roasts and stew meats. And so a lot of, like, the items that we've been serving at the high school, for instance, we've been making some beef boudreaux with our tacos instead of just ground beef tacos. We have been roasting turkey. So we did a family meal in December. It was the first time that we've done family meals since pre-COVID. And that was a fresh roasted turkey that we brought in in order to serve those, you know, serve those families.
I had that. It was really good.
Thank you. So, yeah, so we have been trying to increase the amount of scratch cooking that we do. I wish I could put a percentage on it, because it just depends on the month and what's available seasonally here, you know, and what we're able to get through USDA. So because we are, still have to be, you know, very kind of penny-wise, we do still get a number of our items from the USDA. So we try to, I would say, if we're maybe at 30% scratch cooking, and it doesn't always mean the entree. You know, we're putting out a lot of fresh-made salads and things like that, you know, in order to give these kids, again, more opportunities than just eating chicken nuggets and pizza, although if they choose pizza over anything every day. Trust me, it's a sticking point with my chef, who on Tuesday, for Mardi Gras, made a homemade jambalaya. We had some blackened chicken, you know, starting with fresh chicken breasts. We blackened it, you know, had it marinating, you know, overnight. Actually, tomorrow, we have drumsticks that have been marinating for two days in a spice blend, and now we're gonna be roasting them off tomorrow with barbecue sauce. I mean, so we are starting with a lot of raw products, which isn't necessarily heard of in school lunch, you know, and bringing that to the kitchen. know, and bringing that to the kids so they get a much healthier, you know, item. But yeah, so Jambalaya, he was pretty upset, you know, 300 slices of pizza out of 40 servings of jambalaya, but I was like, the 40 kids that had it would have loved it, so it's fine. We made 40 kids incredibly happy.
Yeah, it's great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
I'll take it.
Okay, you can leave now.
She, she works very, very early in the morning, so when there's a question about weather the next morning, she's like the first phone call because, yeah, she, she reports very early.
Alrighty, thank you for that. Up next will be the operational referendum update. So we just wanted to provide a, just a quick update, um, of where things are at and, thank you, um, quick update of where things are at and, um, hopefully these slides and, and some of this is starting to sound a little bit more familiar than, you know, what it had maybe a month ago here, so. All right, um, here we go, let me get all set up. Following the April 2023 Operational Referendum, which was not approved by voters, the Board of Education enacted a $3.3 million in budget cuts. The Board prioritized these cuts and prepayment of existing debt in the 23, 24 school year budget in response to voter feedback. In order to address the, I must be a bad speaker, I think, huh? Is that what it is?
No, I think they did really well right up till now.
Okay, alright. You hear this the whole time, I thought it was, anyway. In order to address the ongoing financial challenges, the Board is asking community to consider a new referendum question on the April 2024 ballot. On April 2nd, our community will vote on a proposed solution of these financial challenges. If voters approve the referendum, the district will be able to exceed its revenue limit by 6.5 million per year for the next three years. With a continued priority of student safety and well-being, approved referendum funds will be used to preserve current programming, services and staffing relative to enrollment. Maintain current programs and course offerings and retain high-quality teachers and staff. And if you look below, you can see the question that will appear on the back of the ballot from what I understand. Which is always great, but, um, and, and what we, what we've worked hard to, and, and through a number of board meetings, uh, we've worked really hard to, to really shorten that, uh, ballot question and, uh, you know, really scribbling out every word that comes across that, uh, that is not meaningful in there. So that's what you get. I think that's, that's well written and, uh, hopefully, um, people will understand it perhaps a bit more than what they have in the past. What, uh, what we're working on is making sure that everybody is well aware, the questions are answered, the community is, is well aware what's going on. So February 21st, the Ford Atkinson High School at 5:30 will be public engagement session number one, followed by March 14th at Purdy Elementary School at 5:30. I believe most or all of us will be at those sessions and really they're engaging with, um, you know, the public on, on other questions that we will be able to answer. We're also out in a number of school events, civic clubs, uh, community, um, if there's, if there's a way for us to engage with public, we're certainly open to that. So, uh, if anyone's got an event or anything like that, we're, uh, we'd be more than happy to engage with public on that. Vote April 2nd, three-year operational referendum. And that should be it, thank you.
Sorry, nobody's clapping for you.
Well, Amy, that you can, you can clap. Alrighty, uh, moving to items for future board meetings.
Can we, can we just, can we talk about the referendum for just a minute? I mean, I, I, I mean, I know, all we are doing is talking about the referendum. I hope people are hearing that it's going to be on the ballot. I hope people are planning on going out and voting. I just think that the, the website is, you guys are doing a great job. We're all collecting questions, we're putting them out there in the frequently asked questions. It is not easy to understand the budgeting. I have spreadsheets and spreadsheets and numbers and if anyone wants to see the transparency of the district funds.
Yeah, right.
Read the audit report. This, there's nothing transparent. That was a objective auditor that came and said, this is where you are. This is how much you're bringing in, this is how much you ran the district. I haven't talked to anyone in the staff, in students, people in the community. I haven't heard that, you know, wow, there are teachers sitting around doing nothing or there's, you know, too many teachers in the classrooms, too many aides. I just, I think it's really important for people to learn about the referendum, understand where all the numbers come from. You're going to hear revenue limits and levy limits and levy rates and it is very confusing and the budget. I mean, Nathan Knit sends us, you know, papers and papers and papers of reports with numbers and numbers and funds and you heard the nutrition fund and you heard the general fund and money can't just be moved around and it has to be used for specific purposes in the sense of an operational referendum for the operations, the ongoing operations of our schools. I just think it's really important, I hope everyone in the community educates themselves, finds out about it, ask questions. You have all of our emails, you probably have all of our phone numbers, um, on the board, happy to talk to anyone in the community. I just think it can't be said enough that we want voters to come out, we want people to express their opinion about the referendum and the support of the community and the support of the school district, so. Just had to make that statement.
Yeah, no, thank you for all that. And, and, you know, when it, when it comes to, you know, some, like, you, you referenced the, the spreadsheets and the sheets, the sheets of paper, I see all that, that, that's not unique to Ford Atkinson, right? Like, that's, um, that's public education funding, as I have, uh, quickly begin to realize. But, you know, what I feel this time around and first what we, we felt last year is, I think everyone's, you know, I, I feel like we're, you know, everyone's taking ownership of what's going on. People are starting to understand this a bit better, what they, what they had last year and I, I certainly appreciate that, the engagement that's happening. So, uh, you know, from my point of view, everything just feels much different. And you, I, I, I think as, as a school district, I think about those, think about this driving home today, like, I'm not sure how much more transparent that we can be in the process that we're having today. You know, if you look at the FAQs, it's on the website, like, I'm not sure how much more we can put on there without making it confusion, but it's, everything is there to make a, to make a sound decision. And if, and if it's not there for you to make a sound decision, we would love to hear from you. I, I think as a, as a school board, um, you know, it's not often that we can all get together and, and outside of what we see here. You know, people think that, um, you know, we're together, we're, you know, we're, we're together all the time. That's simply not true, right? And so when we get the opportunity that, that, um, we can speak to the public, we certainly will. And I think as a school board, we've, we've bound together, we've kind of locked our arms and said, we're going to push this thing forward. So I'm proud of the school board, um, by doing that and everybody understands, um, how important that this is. So I appreciate from, you know, from the staff, from the administration, from the school board, um, you know, truly one for it.
Yeah, I mean legally, we can't be talking except in open meetings. And I think that the fiscal responsibility that this board and previous boards have done with the district's money is very evident, that we are running high-quality programming, but not in excess of staff, not in excess of administration, not even in excess of buildings. I mean, we have what we need with the high-quality programming, the summer school programming, um, which I think that's like net zero, um, that I just think it's really important for people to make sure that they're asking the questions, they're talking to people and that you get out and vote.
I'd have to agree with that. Um, you know, we talk a lot about numbers and stuff and we just got to remember that the largest component of educating our kids are these services which come from our teachers and, you know, we're human beings that, as much as we would love to just, you know, operate everywhere, we just can't. And in order to serve all these kids, how, you know, we need to make sure that we're able to, um, take care of our teachers and how do we do that as a community? And, um, allow them to be able to have the, the time to take care of our kids in such a way that they can become these productive citizens, you know, to be able to understand what they're doing and to go and vote. So, um, you know, yeah, we talk about a lot of numbers, but I think that we should also be cognizant of our teaching staff and all the hard work they've been doing. And if there's a way that we can kind of offset some tiredness or whatnot that they've been doing, I think that it'd be something that we need to think about.
Alrighty, uh, thank you for that. Moving on to item eight, items for future board meetings.
Uh, yes, among several other items coming up in the next few months, we have start college now and early college credit program requests. We'll have, uh, remarks from our school board candidate, the preliminary notices of non-renewal, um, and there are many others, but those are the three that are listed there for you tonight.
I assume so, yeah, great. Alrighty, thank you. And then at this time, uh, going to item nine here, uh, moving into closed session, uh, for an evaluation. We would need a motion to go into closed session this evening.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education convene in closed session as authorized under Section 19.851(c) of Wisconsin statutes to conduct the annual evaluation of Superintendent Dr. Abbott.
Go ahead.
No, you already did.
A, a motion, a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Rogers and all those, all those in favor.
Aye. That's a roll call.
Oh.
Oh.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mrs. Sully.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta.
Yes.
Mr. Nickram.
Yes, right, moving to closed session.